Sorry about that. I'm usually like down at the Board of Education Center, but I just don't know why my brain slipped and I. Do we have all the folks that we think are coming?
Yes, can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, so um, we will go ahead and get started. So you can take it away, Ms. Crable. Ms. Crable, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
You can go ahead with the um, with the welcoming opening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were waiting to get us online.
No, we're good to go.
Okay, so um, hello everyone. Um, welcome to um, the July Title IX Committee meeting. We don't have a really, you know, full agenda today, so but we do have you very interesting um, speaker with us. Kares, thank you for joining us and um, have some updates from Jerel. So I'm gonna go ahead and um, turn over um, our updates to Jerel.
Well, we need to look at the minutes first.
Oh, I'm sorry. God, my brain is like completely. Can we, can we post those up? Did anybody have any comments um, about the minutes? Um, additions, deletions, corrections? These were posted, so I hope everybody had had a chance to either print them off or or look through them.
If there aren't any um, other comments, then we'll just go ahead and approve those as.
Okay, so here, yeah. So then, uh, if we didn't have any comments, then um, I would like, just like to make a quick motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay.
Anybody have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Okay. Alright, so um, let's just do the, I'm, we're not gonna do a roll call. If every, anybody who, everybody who agrees, just go ahead and say aye, or yes. Or raise your hand in your, in your um, in your comment section. Or in front of your face and all that kind of stuff. Okay, um, is there anybody that has anything to add? I didn't see that, so we'll take that as a no. So let's just go ahead and approve those minutes as presented. Thank you, guys.
Alright. So now we are at the Title IX updates. So I will share my screen, uh, Kim. If you'll let me have access to that. So I'm going to share my screen with an update from the Department of Education, OS, the Department of Education, OCR. Based on an item we had talked about not too long ago, I think last month. So as we have stated, well, as I have stated, um, the Department of Education and OCR has been slowly trickling out since the Biden Administration came into office, uh, their stance and position on um, what Title IX means when it comes to LGBTQ plus uh, students and persons. And so this update came at the end of last month. And it is further guidance and examples uh, of what OCR, types of cases OCR will open and investigate as it pertains to the treatment of LGBTQ plus students. So as we know before, last month, um, the Department of Education, OCR, announced that the Title IX Regulations Provision on the Basis of Sex Includes Discrimination Based on LGBTQ Plus Students. Um, and they provided some specific examples that I thought were very helpful um, for a school system such as ourselves to determine what types of behaviors uh, they will be addressing under these new um, articulated um, enforcement guidelines and policies. And so I'll just read a couple of them for you. Uh, number one says, "A high scho- a lesbian high school student wants to bring her girlfriend to a school social event where students can bring a date. Teachers refuse to sell her tickets, telling the student that bringing a girl as a date is not appropriate for school. Teacher suggests that the student attend alone or bring a boy as a date." So that's an example of something that OCR, if that were to happen in our school system, OCR would be able to, if they received the complaint of that, OCR would be able to open and, open that investigation and determine if the school system is treating persons differently on the basis of their sex, which includes gender identity. A second one, "When, when he starts middle school, a transgender boy introduces himself as Brayden and tells his classmates he uses he/him pronouns. Some of his former elementary school classmates out him to others. And every day during physical education class, call him transphobic slurs, push him and call him by his former name. When he reports it to the school's administrators, they dismiss it, saying you can't expect everyone to agree with you, with your choices." So again, this is another example from O- OCR, uh, talking about harassment and bullying from other students and also uh, maybe deliberate indifference by the school system by s- not really doing anything to address it once they became aware, had actual knowledge, by saying you can't expect everyone to agree with your choices. So um, that's another example that they're gonna actually, um, OCR will actually enforce if one of these scenarios happen to occur in the Henry County Schools. I will skip uh, two and three and go to the last one. "On her way to the girls restroom, a transgender high school's girl is stopped by the principal who bars her entry. The principal tells the student to use the boys restroom or nurse's office because her school records, uh, her school records identify her as a male. Later, the student joins her friends to try out for the girls cheerleading team and the coach turns her away from tryouts solely because she is transgender. When the student complains, the principal tells her, 'Those are district policies.'" So this, the last example, I, I don't think I've ever seen the Department of Education or OCR be this explicit. And what types of cases, situations, uh, they will um, investigate when they see these in schools and colleges and universities. So I definitely appreciate this, and this will definitely provide some further guidance for New Henry County Schools on how we um, operate in this area to make sure we're complying with Title IX. And so that last piece mixes a couple of um, points. One, we have issue with restroom locker room usage. Uh, for here, New Henry County Schools, as a reminder, and also an update, uh, the Gavin Grimm case, uh, told us what we had to do. Persons uh, can use the restroom based on their gender identity. And um, so that is an example in this particular case here. And recently, uh, the Supreme Court declined on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Uh, the Supreme Court declined to hear the Gavin Grimm case. What had happened was, of course, the student requested use the restroom matching the gender identity. Uh, the school system sued and it was, they were suing all the way up to the Supreme Court. The, the Supreme Court decided not to hear the case. So that Gavin Grimm case will stand and will be the law for uh, our school system unless something else happens at a federal level. But that will be here to stay for the foreseeable future. And then with the other update from OCR, talking about transgender persons in sports, we can see that uh, a school district might be open to an investigation from OCR if they were to decline the suit of opportunities, uh, the um, not use, to participate on the team that they identify with. So those were some, some quick Title IX updates, uh, based on our last discussion at the last meeting that I wanted to share with you all. Uh, are there any comments or questions based on those? Ms. Cohen?
So how do we expect um, this last example to interface with the North Carolina High School Athletics Association? And they're specifically talking about cheerleading there, but cheerleading is a competitive sport. And uh, right now, that looks like a conflict.
So uh, the way it would work, um, the High School Athletics Association, I don't think they're necessarily in conflict. Uh, because the High School Athletic Association says that they, a person can participate based on their gender identity if they have been approved through a hearing panel that they have uh, at the High School Athletic Association. So the answer is yes, with an exception. Essentially, it's being determined as a person meeting certain qualifications. If they do, then they can participate matching gender identity. In that particular example, uh, they were out, outright denied the opportunity without any type of inquiry um, of their transgender status. For New Henry County Schools, at the middle school, we are not using that panel. We, we have outright, um, yes, essentially for gen- gender identity. So that's the distinction. The High School Athletic Association has a more scrutinized approach. Um, and for middle school, for us, uh, we don't have any scrutiny, we don't have a, a panel of individuals making a determination.
The, um, and Jerel, I would like to add, um, to kind of answer, um, add to what I, Leslie was, was bringing up is that um, the North Carolina High School Sports Association and New Henry County, we, we give the, the right to try out for a team. And we don't, just because you want to participate, doesn't mean that you make the team. So that needs to always be out there, that it's not an automatic, if you have to try out, just like everybody else. And I did see some things going around on Facebook, um, in several different um, forums and chats that um, parents did not have to be notified. And um, just as in any extracurricular activity or sports, um, parents have to sign a permission slip allowing their child to um, participate. So um, I know there was a concern about, you know, maybe middle school children or high school children being outed, you know, by um, this, this policy. And that they didn't have to get parent permissions, but we, we do require parent permission for any child who tries out for sports. So I just wanted to make that um, kind of clarification in there as well.
Thank you, Ms. Crable. And so the way it would work, um, when it comes to parent involvement, uh, we don't seek to out any children.
Right.
They have privacy rights as well. And so what would work, what would happen is I would have a conversation with the student to inform them as best as possible. And then they can make the decisions for what they think is appropriate based on um, their own thoughts and concerns. So we're not contacting parents or outing them, we're really just informing the student of all potential options and letting the student make that determination for.
Yeah, the, the student makes the choice, but the student also has to take home the permission slip. And so the parent who's reading the permission slip would, would, might wonder if they're trying out for a sport with the gender with which they identify, which the parent may not be aware of. So that's the only, I mean, yes, I would, I didn't even mean to imply that we were gonna call up, "Hey, Ms. Crable, Stephanie, you know, wants to play on, you know, on, on a boys team" or "Try out for a boys team." The um, that's not what I meant. So thank you for clarifying that, Jerel. It's just a standard permission slip that would come home, but I didn't want that, I didn't, well, I wanted that misnomer to be corrected so that everyone was hearing the correct information.
Right. Um, thank you, Ms. Crable. So.
But it, but it also is, I mean, the, and this is gonna be new to us, you know, this school year coming up. Um, we, we've had some cases of, you know, um, bathroom and locker room issues um, already at school and that, you know, Jerel's been handling them, you know, case by case. But um, now that, you know, the um, the Gavin Grimm case has been with, you know, up, you know, refused to be seen by the, the Supreme Court, is that this is our law, you know? So we, we're not out there just waiting to see what the law says. I mean, this is our law and we have to, whether people, you know, like it or agree with it or not, it is the law and we have to, we have to uphold that, you know, and figure out the best way possible to make it comfortable um, at our schools.
Right, I agree. And so uh, that's all the updates that I have, uh, next on the agenda.
Leslie, does that answer your question? I'm trying to read your face a little bit and I'm seeing like no nod or no, so that, are you good?
That, that, that answers it pretty well. I mean, I, I'm of the opinion that, that the High School Association's probably gonna get challenged, but we'll, we'll see where that goes.
And, and, and they might, yeah.
Um, but yeah, I, I, I understand what we're doing and I, I agree with it, so.
Okay, thanks. I just wanna make sure we, we were, we're all clear. Okay. So Jerel, guest, guest speaker, yay, we're up to the next. So um, Kares Clegg um, is, works in our Communications Department. She's also on our Title IX, I mean, our um, EDI Committee. And I happen to be listening in on one of those meetings where she was talking about her research paper. And um, so I thought, wow, that would be a great um, addition to our Title IX. So um, you don't need to um, read us your whole, your whole dissertation or your whole paper. Um, but you know, give us the highlights, Kares, and how, um, so we can just kind of absorb that and see how that might affect our work here in New Henry County Schools. So thank you for being here with us.
Thank you so much for having me. Again, like Ms. Crable said, I'm Kares Clegg. I work for the Communication and Outreach Division with New Henry County Schools. I am also a grad student at UNCW, um, working on my Masters in Conflict Management and Resolution. And this past spring semester, I was in a class with Dr. Bruce McKinney. Shout out to Dr. McKinney if he's listening, or anyone who knows Dr. McKinney is listening. He's a phenomenal professor over there at UNCW. So I had the pleasure of taking intercultural dispute resolution with him. And our final um, paper, we were to choose a intercultural dispute, argue about it and analyze it in the context of how it relates to the course materials within the program of CMR. With everything that was going on in the country at the time, especially in North Carolina with the bills that were coming, I decided to do mine on the intercultural dispute resolution between chan- transgender athletes, specifically trans female athletes and their role in sports. And um, I, I was able to find out a lot of information. My um, I am by no means an expert on transgender rights or transgender um, terminology. I've definitely learned more and educated myself so that I can know, know more and do better in the future. So I hope if you get nothing else from that, then you find a little bit of education yourself from what I researched and what I shared with you today so that you know bet- you know better and can therefore do better in the future as well. Um, just some of the hot topics from um, reading it is, that I found is just how many transgender individuals we have in our country to begin with. Um, I think at the time I was writing the paper, um, about there were transgender individuals made up about three percent of our population in the United States alone. And when you say three percent, that doesn't seem like that much, but that is over two million transgender individuals.
Kares?
Yes.
Uh, your sound just went out a bit. I'm not sure what happened there. It, it sounds a bit robotic or staticky?
Yeah.
It just happened all of the blue.
Am I sounding any better?
No, maybe, did you, maybe try and plug in? I don't know.
Wardrobe change. Yeah. Kares, you want us to move on to the next thing while you're trying to figure out your technical difficulties?
Yeah, we can just um, move on as she figured that out really quickly.
Yeah, let's do that and then we can, um, while she's doing it, she can just join us back. Unless she thinks she's good. She's good? Is that what this means?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, jump in. Oh, did she, did that mean she was jumping off?
No, she's still here.
Okay, I lost your face too.
Alright, can we hear me now?
Yes.
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 So sorry, guys. I had to then turn off all the audio on my other device, so we weren't getting any echoes.
Okay, you're good now. Carry on, my friend.
Alright, just to pick up, um, I think I left off where we were talking about numbers of transgender individuals in the country. So we're at three percent, which is right over two million um, individuals in the United States alone. And of that three percent, over half of those individuals are between the ages of thirteen and twenty-four years of age. So that coincides exactly with that age range that we are serving here within New Henry County Schools and then even crossing over into our Cape Fear Community College and USCW audience as well. Um, those transgender individuals, um, as we're seeing that age, that age, um, that lower age number, we're, research has found that um, individuals are identifying earlier and earlier in their life than they were previously. Boomers were um, averaging at identifying around the age of twenty-two. Then you have Gen X who was averaging, um, I think around the age of nineteen. And then even as you moved into the millennial age, you saw individuals identifying at an average age of sixteen, seventeen. So we're gonna continuously see this trend where individuals are identifying earlier and earlier as age. And that's gonna be important when you look at the research, when you look at transgender um, individuals, when you look at, when you're making the arguments of, are they allowed to play in middle school and high school sports? It's gonna be important to remember when they're, when the majority of them are identifying as transgender. Because that, that number will be influenced directly by testosterone levels and puberty and when those, those individual things are happening as well. Um, we've, we are seeing this increased um, identification due in part to um, media and culture and Hollywood and the prevalence of some of our notably famous um, transgender individuals, Laverne Cos, Elliot Page, Caitlyn Jenner. Um, when, when our youth and when our adolescents are seeing these people being so vocal, so loud, so out and proud in the media, it's also in turn giving them the um, the pride, the, the self-love, the self-worth and self-identity to also come out even earlier on. What transgender looks like for some students may um, not be what we see transgender looking like for some. For some, it can be something as easy as a haircut. For others, it's a haircut, a name change. Um, it's a, uh, it's wearing breast suppressants across their chest. It, and then for others, it could be testosterone injections. It could be, it could be as, as far as uh, reassignment surgery. So that you just have to be able to identify and know what different levels, or I don't wanna say different levels, what different um, transition stages students may be at within their, um, their identity and trans, transgender um, that journey. Um, what I learned is, um, also, we learned about the history of transgender, anti-transgender policies. And these would originate and during Cold War, during the Olympics and world sports. And they were kind of set up to um, prevent Eastern European men from essentially trying to compete in women's sports. So they would do um, test, um, tests to kind of figure out these, um, figure out and identify these, these males who were trying to become females for the purpose of participating in their sports. Um, during this era, testing procedures were put in place to prevent this. Um, these policies included visual tests of the sex organs and later moved to genetic testing once they became available. But they were all very intrusive and all very, I would almost say demeaning to anyone who had to go to kind of undergo them. And there was no criteria of who they were testing. Um, but we've now seen, even at the highest level of competition, even with the International Olympic Committee, that they have sought to create an inclusive envi- environment where transgender women can perform and compete. They now have, um, what's the word I'm looking for? They now have criteria that they go by and a solemn declaration that um, a gender identity is fa- female and the maintenance of total serum testosterone levels are below a certain amount and at least twelve months um, of taking testosterone suppressants before competing will allow you to be able to compete in the IOC. And then with the IOC making their um, setting their policies, you see other policies that were made also coming from the NCAA, coming from the World Sports Federation and then trickling down even to the North Carolina High School Athletic Associations where you were just talking about those, um, those government bodies and what they, what the criteria is they give for um, transgender athletes. Um, we, in my article, I, in my research paper, I also talked about the, the history of violence and what leads to this. and what leads to this violence because, that happens against transgender individuals. Human Rights Campaign had collected at least 25 transgender deaths, deaths due to violent acts in the year 2019. And that number immediately doubles to almost 44, nearly doubles to 44 in the year 2020. So with, with this anti-trans rhetoric and with the anti-trans language that we use and the bills that we put in the house and the conversations we have where should they, shouldn't we? It leads to this, this environment that we create that thus leads towards violence and essentially costs, can cost the lives of our trans youth. And not, and primarily our trans women of color because they are at a disproportionate rate. They are oftentimes victims of these heinous acts against them. Let's see. So, yeah, also, I did a little bit of likening to, there was this term that I felt was very important in my research and it was coined by a sociologist and it's the term penis panic. And it's when males have this need to, to say that, to protect women's virtue or the world, the country's virtue because they feel that transgender males are going to overtake the world or going to, or somehow threatening cis woman spaces. So it's just this need to kind of go in there and fix that. And we first saw penis panic with the bathroom bills. And then we're now seeing it as well with the transgender rights. So it was just kind of terms that are being crossed and used between sociologists, psychologists and in, in, within medical terminology now to kind of see how, what we do and what we decide and the conversations we are have contribute to that violence and to the discrimination against our trans community. But just to sort of sum it up, the research showed that athletic and physical performance between boys and girls pre-puberty is almost non-existent. So again, when I mentioned earlier that our youth are identifying younger and younger, so they're identified before they hit puberty. So that's at that time where there is no, no, oh, boys are stronger than, than girls or boys have this advantage to girls because it's, it's hitting at the age where that testosterone level has not been, has not been increased and is not creating that disadvantage. It isn't until puberty with the increase of testosterone on cis males that the athletic disadvantage becomes apparent. As more transgender youth select to identify as trans and begin hormone therapy and testosterone suppressants, the disadvantage between the male and female physiology should disappear. Further research on the long-term effects of testosterone suppressants on trans girls in the future will provide validity to this argument. As the millennial generation begins procreating with the next generation, assumptions can be made that they will be more inclined and willing to support their children participating in hormone therapy and even sexual reassignment surgeries. If these two elements trend upwards, they also can silence the conversations regarding unfair advantages within sports by the trans community. With the IOC and other international sports federations already following trans athletes who have already allowing trans athletes who have undergone sexual, sexual assignment surgeries to participate at their level, predictions are that the same will be ruled at the lower levels of competitive sports and eventually trickle down to middle and high school regulation as well. So that's my research, the information I found. If you guys have any questions for me, I can take them now, but thank you for letting me share, share with you.
Thank you, Caress. That was so interesting to hear. The, and I just wanted to kind of reiterate that, you know, New Hanover County Schools is not trying to get involved in any child's decision or any family decision-making that is going on with that. You know, all we want to do is make sure that every student, no matter who they are, you know, receives all the opportunities to participate in school activities and they all get the same sound, basic education as any other student. So, yeah, so I just wanted to, you know, make sure that, that we were all kind of clear on that. But the more we know, the more, the better we do, you know, in helping our folks. Yeah, Leslie?
I'd just like to point out so people are kind of aware because I, I know the medical care that transgender students get is something that a lot of people get really uncomfortable with. Even though honestly, it's none of their business. It's between the family, the child and the doctor. But very rarely is any kind of surgery done on a minor. It's starting to happen a little bit more, but even then it's at, you know, 16 or so, not, we're not talking about young children. Or it's done in cases where you have a child who is intersex and that's someone who's born with ambiguous genitalia and maybe both sets of gonads. And so things where there is a real malformation. And the hormone treatments are the same thing. Generally physicians are very conservative about what they will do. And the only times that these more aggressive tracks are taken where things more than puberty blockers are prescribed are in children where the gender dysphoria is so severe that the child's life is at risk. And it's all very controversial right now within the transgender community and within the families because a lot of these families want better access for their children sooner so that their children can just get on with their lives, right? But the medical community in general is very hesitant to do anything irreversible before a child is 16 or 18. So I just wanted to kind of make sure everybody kind of had an idea of what that's like because I know people come up saying, you know, they're, this is child abuse and, you know, you're doing terrible things to these children. And this is all being done in a very thoughtful, careful way within these families and is really life-saving care.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, and that's why that was a point I was sort of coming around to was that this is not a school issue. This is a complete family issue. We just have to make sure that everybody is included and we don't test, you know, there's no quotient on there on what your, what your hormone quotient is, you know, for that. It's just you are coming to school to learn and to participate and to be a kid. So, all right, does anybody have any other comments that we want to make? And then we will, the, well, you already, your comment, Leslie, was about the, the surgery. But I'm sure Caress and her would probably know that. Okay, so let's go ahead and move on to the membership. There we go. So with membership, what I wanted to talk about was kind of like, I know we had talked before about different committees and we still have the Athletic Committee that is, we have yet to, to fill. Even though what we did was when we each went around and said, you know, or told Jorrell and I what committee that you wanted to participate in. One of the things that I'm working with, working on, it hasn't come to fruition yet and, you know, Steph Walker jumped in, you know, when I'm done. I would like for our, our entire board to revisit what our Board Committee memberships and applications look like so that we, and this hasn't been approved, this is just my, my idea. The, to make sure that our, our memberships are, you know, inclusive of, of our community and that we all kind of have our own sets of goals and our own sets of action steps and things to do. So before, I'm hoping that that will come up in August, but if, if it doesn't, then we can move forward around it. But I wanted us to have that whole conversation as a board before we really narrow down what our membership looked like and what our application form looks like. Even though Jorrell has one ready, you know, for us to review when we get there. The, we are currently in the hiring mode for Supervisor of Athletics and Driver's Ed. So that person, when hired, would need to be on this Title IX Committee and specifically would need to be on the Athletics Committee. So we don't have that person yet. So we definitely need to look at that. So that's where I am with membership. Steph Walker, did you want to add anything in on that?
No, I just wanted to, I know we had talked about having a discussion on obviously committees because we both chair committees and we know, we want to make sure that what we're doing on our committees are, you know, as far as membership is concerned, that we're covered. But you've already covered that. So hopefully we will get to that discussion soon. That's all I had to.
Yep. So does anybody else have any, any questions or comments about membership? Everybody cool, you know, with just waiting one more month, why we, why the school system kind of, you know, get some of that stuff figured out and why our board, you know, gets ourself in, in a more, in a more common place with our board committees?
I have one quick point to say regarding membership. So of course, when this committee was put together, we reached out to a lot of different community partners. Coastal Horizons was one of those partners. Andrea Stowe had served on the Title IX Committee and was, or is part of the Coastal Horizon. I think she's the director at this point. And so she had to take a leave from the Title IX Committee to focus on her Coastal Horizon duties. And so with that.
Jorrell, Andrea's, she's with Domestic Violence Shelter and Services. She's our shelter director.
Okay, I'm sorry. But she has stepped down and in replace of her is Clay Gruber. And so Clay is with us today in place of Andrea Stowe, who, so Clay will be replacing her as a member on the Title IX Committee. So I just wanted to introduce him as he is here, in case you all saw the new face, so welcome Clay.
I did see his face on there, so yay. The, yeah, and that's, that's a good point, Jorrell, just to kind of go back and revisit that. When this team was put together, you know, like two and a half years ago, you know, we were definitely looking for the community partners with expertise that we didn't have. And we were primarily focused on some of the misconduct that was occurring. So our, our committee has sort of morphed into a lot more than that right now is, you know, they, we, we put the athletics to the side, bringing that back to the forefront. Our focus has, has, has shifted, you know, or is shifting, I believe, more from, from reaction and trying to just get things straightened out to more prevention and education. So we, we have to, you know, obviously do that shift in our membership and, and our focus. But we, we, I think we've done a really good job in trying to sort of set out what our goals look like, but we, we will firm that up more in the, in the next month or the month after that. Because, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer that we don't need to have committees and meet just having committees and meet, that we need to, you know, have some goals and have some objectives and actually do it. And I'm really proud that, you know, that our committee was able to bring something forward and actually get it approved. And we're just, you know, have to wait till it's our time, you know, to get it actually out in the community. But, and that'll, again, just remind everybody in case there's fervor that it doesn't come out in the first week of school. We decided to wait until like mid-fall so the kids get back into school, have at least like a nine weeks period to just acclimate to being in school. And then we'll go from there with our survey. And then speaking of that, you know, survey, you know, is, we're just talking with, you know, Julie Barnum and her department on how that looks like, what that rollout, rollout's going to look like so that we, we are all set and we get it done very professionally. So I'm real happy with that. But that's what we were, that's what our membership kind of looks like. Or our membership, you know, category. So does anybody have any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, so, before we get to next meeting, I just, I, I'm stealing from EDI. Is there anything else, you know, for the, for the, the good of the team that we might need to put, maybe not discuss this time, but to get, you know, to get put on our agenda for next time? You're always welcome to email, you know, Jorrell, Stephanie or I, me, sorry, I'm trying to get my, my grammar right, and let us know of any topics ahead of time. But the, so school starts. We will, we won't be in, will we be in session? When, when our next meeting, I don't have my, I didn't bring my calendar with me. It's.
The next meeting for our Title IX Committee.
Yes.
The date is the 16th, but we will have to meet another day. And so I will work with you, Ms. Cribble, to determine what that date is for August. And we'll send that announcement out to the rest of the group here.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. The 23rd would, would be, the 16th add plus seven is 23rd. So that is like the first day of school. So I didn't know if that would be not a good date with everybody. Some of us have kids in school, not, you know, saying us generically because I don't. But the, I don't want to make it, you know, a burden for us. So let us, let us take a look at that and maybe send out a Google, you know, a Google survey to see when that is. But no reason that to cancel other than the fact that a couple of us can't make that meeting, that meeting date, which would be important to us. So Steph, you want to like close us out with anything? The, this is awesome, Leslie, it's a short meeting, but that doesn't mean it's not important.
It's not too short. I mean, it's not 15 minutes short, but that's okay. I, I, like I normally do when I close, I'd like to thank everyone for their continued participation. And I look forward to meeting, again, to talk, continue the work of this important, very important committee. And I know when we look at membership, we're really going to, you know, gear what we do to, to the really important work of the district. Also, as always, thankful for Mr. Lewis and his, his crucial updates, federal updates so that we are always doing what we should be doing. And to Caress, which I think she's gone, but I still wanted to thank her for making us all very, very much smarter than, than we were before. I learned a lot. I jotted some notes down. And then I just want to say, I hope everyone has a wonderful week. I might not be at the next meeting because I will be out of the country, but I look forward to listening. So thank you very much, everyone.
All righty, well, thank you and enjoy the rest of July and then into August. School's almost here. Bye.
Bye, everyone.